You could all please rise. Fifth flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can all bow your heads for. Heavenly Father, we'd like to thank you for the continued gifts of rain our community's been receiving. Also for the great weather we had for the chalk fest for them folks and for the wonderful artwork. And also for our late Mayor Jerry Odenauer. Continued prayers to him, his family, as we gather every meeting. And also, please, Lord, help us to make the right decisions for our community and continue this wonderful city of Hazen as it is. In your name we pray. Amen. Reading and approval of minutes from August 4th, 2025.
Motion to approve and suspend the reading of minutes.
Motion by Folkerts. Second by Stern. Discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Monty, do you have any add-ons or anything?
I do not, no.
Ask for approval of the agenda as presented.
So moves.
Motion by Folkerts.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Agenda is set. Five A consultation. Attorney and engineer, engineers report. Jared?
You. Alright, good evening. Jared Bundy with Moore Engineering. It's my report up there, everybody should have it. Generally, very vanilla stuff on here tonight. Expedition estates. Again, being built privately, being turned over to the city when done. I think you're all aware of the, you know, they'll hang out there right now. I have not spoken with the Williams Building Company since Tim Williams was here at your council meeting. I may have had a quick conversation with somebody at some point, but I don't know that we have a path forward to resolve the issues and I would probably suggest that it's time to draft them another formal letter. I can help write it, but it needs to go to the city of Hazen, asking them for a schedule and a timeline to complete all the remaining improvements. Could get these things resolved so we can, unless you're aware of some, something or some conversations that I'm not aware of. No? Okay. So, I think that's where we're at there. Any questions? Monty, you'll be able to?
Yeah, I'll work for Jared.
Alley improvements, if you remember the alley buying Union State Bank was being built by the city, special assess to owners in that, in that area as the improvements benefited them. We did do the final walkthrough and I recommended the final payment to Winkler, forty-two thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars fifty-one cents. That takes retainage down to zero dollars. Generally, I would say, you know, the, the contract price of two ninety-eight seven came in at three oh one, so about, within about one percent of, you know, bid prices. The one big change order that we did was to add those private driveways in that time because those folks petitioned for that or wanted that, so I would recommend approval of the payment to Winkler. Any questions?
So.
Motion by Folkerts.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Hear no discussion, roll call. Folkerts.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Monty, just a question on that. Do you know if that's going on the specials this fall or it's?
We were gonna try to do it this fall, but with the timeframe here, well, with all the publication and stuff that's necessary.
There is a requi- if you, if you do decide to do it, there is a required letter or notification has to go to the county, I think, in the next couple of weeks to let them know that you anticipate.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, otherwise, I don't know as much about this one, but sanitary sewer improvement project. Just kind of going through, this hasn't changed much. They do have a weekly construction meeting that I hear Grant on every week. Several people from the city involved in that meeting as well. The approval items for you tonight are change order number three and pay estimate number three. Change order was what Grant discussed with you guys at the last meeting where you're gonna have a contractor fill those areas up with gravel, leave them over the winter. He estimated five thousand dollars of, of effort to, to do that. Sounds like that's to be approved. The total price coming in is gonna be four thousand five hundred forty-five dollars. So about what he thought it was gonna be. I don't know that you approved it or didn't approve it, so Grant just said have him approve at this council meeting officially.
Make a motion to approve the change order.
Motion by Folkerts.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Did you, Jared, did you guys have, did you drive, I know I drove over and buy some, not all of them? Were they sufficient for you guys?
I'm not sure yet. They'll have to, before they button everything up, they'll have to be, you know, good for the winter. But no, I don't know if they're tidied up as of right now. But they'll need to be filled out if they're not.
As an old last year, I don't know if you guys saw, there was a CC Steel guy out there. I don't know if they compacted any of it or just, I mean, he was working, it was after, well, it was after seven o'clock.
Okay.
So.
He dug them down, dug some of that gravelly stuff up, but recycling all of them. And then when I talked to him when he was done, he said if some of them settle a little bit more, they need a little more tidy and before winter, it sounded like they would come back. He would depress them again if need be.
Alright, thanks, David. Any other discussion? Roll call. Folkerts.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye. Motion carried.
Next thing is pay up number three for CC Steel. Notice this number is slightly different than what we have on the front page agenda. This is the correct number on the pay up. So this is pay up number three, nine hundred thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars fifty-two cents. That'll basically, it looks like take them to about two-thirds complete with the job. We're still holding a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in retainage from them that we will release at the end, once everything meets the, meets the specifications. So again, that's the pay up, that's the remaining amount. So we're not paying that and we're also holding that amount, which is retainage. We seek an approval of pay estimate number three for CC Steel.
So moves.
Motion by Folkerts.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call. Folkerts.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Sorry, Mr. Aye. Motion carried. Sorry, Monty.
Alright, so now we have a little discussion here because you have, those that, that pay attention to the legislature are aware of the DOT Flex Fund. So, two years ago, it was a kind of new program that was developed in the state. They funded some projects around the state, so this is funding that is specifically set aside through legislative action. If you kind of look at this summary sheet, I'm gonna just kind of slowly go through this a little bit. Sixty million dollars set aside for various things across the state. Some of them, some of the money ended up being direct payments to cities, counties, and townships. In talking with Monty, you haven't gotten that money yet. I think you will, but there is a, a round of applications that cities, counties, and townships can apply for. There was a webinar, there's a, there's a recorded webinar online you can listen to. It's about a two-hour-long webinar that explains what the money's for, where it comes from, how to submit an application. We're gonna end up helping several cities and counties submit applications. But if you kind of really look into it, there's eleven point two million, there's, there's twenty-two million dollars for cities and half of it is for small cities. So it's eleven point two million dollars. However, some of the money is, is gonna be distributed through these prairie dog grants at the end of the biennium. So what we're expecting is another eighty million dollars of projects at the tail end. So what this is for is for transportation projects, you know, not water, not sewer, not, not water towers. In Beulah, they got some engineering paid for for their Phase Two downtown Main Street project that they're gonna be doing. City of Regent had something funded through the main corridor through town. City of Napoleon got some money for one of their main east-west streets in town. You can go right on the county web, or the DOT Flex Fund website and look at the projects they funded last time. They have clear guidance on what they're gonna, what they're looking for this time, so you cities have an opportunity to submit an application. It says here they'll do it in a month. We're gonna, we're gonna have two more meetings before you have to make a decision. A high-ranking project, for example, would be farm-to-market road through the middle of town that connect Main Street and the highway, kind of a gateway or a corridor arterial road through town that would be underneath your jurisdiction. They've got money for bridges. They've got kind of what I would say is low-ranking projects, medium-ranking projects, and high-ranking projects. From looking at things, if you really want to score high, you should apply for forty-nine percent funding. So if you've got a million-dollar project, you know, we shouldn't be going after getting more than half a million bucks. The two things that I could think of from looking at your capital improvement plan would be trying to do something where, you know, we're picking your main arterial roads in town, or, you know, these are scheduled for a chip seal in 2028. That's when they, they should be done, so, you know, we could take and, you know, apply for money to do these main corridors and just get those done. Right? Maybe, maybe end up doing them a year early, which is no big deal, but that saves taxpayers money because we can get some grant money to do them. So that's one way to go. The other way to go would be to take a project like this around Senex. Has some high value. You know, the land use change is now used for trucks. We, we have to get a little more creative in the application of why this is a important project to Hazen and tie in businesses and the just that it's a kind of urban industrial or some commercial corridor here on the edge of town. So you don't have to decide tonight, but you do need to decide if you're gonna apply and which project you're gonna apply for and then how much you're gonna apply for by the, the second meeting in September. I'll shut up for just a second. You guys got any questions? You walked in late, but.
Really certain that I know the answer, but could we use any of that grant money to solve our busing problem?
I don't believe so.
Okay, that's what I was expecting.
Not that I could see.
Okay.
You don't like any of these things, you know? You submit whatever you want. I'm trying to help you pick some high-scoring project that is gonna be something we're gonna be looking at doing anyways, so.
Do you know, Jared, are they looking communities that like have, I'm just gonna say an attractive proposal, or it's just kind of wrap it under the hat, or?
All the applications, so if you go on and watch the webinar, I screenshotted a few things from it. All the applications are gonna get scored and ranked by the same committee at the DOT. And then they're gonna rank them. And then they're going to give them all to a group of Association of Counties, League of Cities, whatever these other entities are, and they're gonna take all those applications and then recommend where to, how much to spread, where to spread it, where to, and then the, the director of the DOT gets the final say on where the money goes. So, and all we can handle and, and do is the scoring and ranking and the application process, how it shakes out at the end politically is beyond what I can do. So that's why when I look at this, there's, there's, closes a gap in an existing network, you know, we don't do that. Removes hazard, load limits, road restrictions, high restrictions. We're not worried about that.
Could you say that that, for the Senex project, I mean, isn't that ease some of the lower restriction issues where you could tie in that way?
Yes, we could. Yep. Yep. Yep, and, and we could make a case. Reduces the need for maintenance costs, or maintenance costs. While we did spend a lot of money on patching this summer along that route, so I could explain that. But again, we're looking at about fifty percent cost share. I think this project was, you know, to do this in concrete was like one point five million, so we could get about half of it. We get it funded, we get about half of it funded, and then I don't know, you know, we'd have to talk with the local entities for the special assessments and who benefits and how to pay for the rest, but it'd be a good step in that direction. Good questions, though. And I can find out, I can try to find out answers for you guys, too.
I know that was my first thought. Is this one right here?
If you're out and showed them out, it's pretty sweet.
If you're set on that, I mean, you should make a motion at some point, you know, directing us to apply for all project and then all the cost percent, which I would recommend being forty-nine percent funding. But you can apply for more, it's just get less bonus points. So that's, that's your decision.
What do you think, Jared? You know, like bridges and stuff, I guess you said. Is there any kind of, it's like maintenance, maintenance that I guess like we could do to ours?
Yeah, that twenty-seven bridge is terrible.
Yeah, that's pretty rough.
Is that a county bridge or? I don't know, but it's terrible. That's a good question.
On a county road, but.
Yeah, I don't know if that's county property, either ours or.
Don't go over the creek, you're talking, right?
Yeah.
Right, you're in the intersection of.
Yes.
Well, there's three of them in town. You know, and the one, one that's I guess like north of Senex, I don't think is really, really like ours, but.
You're thinking about the one north of Auburn twenty-seven?
Yeah.
That one's rough.
Yeah.
It is a nice speedboat.
Yeah.
Well, it is, it's a nice speedboat. I can imagine going over it in the garbage truck or a semi, just going over it might pick up and you're about to lose it.
If it's a county bridge, I would say that it's their job to deal with it. Or if it's, if it's, I know we got some kind of determination from the DOT at one point, we were looking into.
Yeah, we were looking at repairing that box that was ours.
Yeah.
The box was ours. It was a bridge. It was part of.
Well, the box is.
The box, well, there's two.
Well, there's two there, yeah.
There's a bridge and then a box to the north.
Yeah, we would have kind of. I'll do whatever you guys want. Is it, is it the bridge or is it just a roadway?
It's like a secondary.
It's just left box over to the north.
It's like that box. There's the box.
It's like an old, old, tight deal.
But is, is it just a roadway or that box itself?
Yeah, it's a brick.
Okay. There's a separate pot of money specifically for bridges, so you could submit a different application to that. I didn't, they didn't even list that on that front page, but, you know, of all these different pots for cities, counties, and townships, they just have a whole separate one for box colors, or for bridges, excuse me. Like this, this that I was, that he had up there? Bridges is a whole new category. So you could submit two. If you wanted to submit one in that program specifically for bridges, we could do that. You wanna do that? I'd have, we'd have to look at it and see exactly what.
And all in the state eyes, bridges has been a hot topic the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Ever since those people that killed Salazar and.
Yeah.
Maybe that would be a good one to go after.
Okay.
If that's ours, obviously, if it's not ours, there's no point of us doing any of that.
Right, and I know the county is going to apply. They have, they have a, a priority list also, like, you know, they've got a capital improvement plan and they took some of their top project needs that they had. And that, I don't think that was one of them, but I know the county engineer, so I can explain what the city's interested in getting done and see what is, see what his application move is and if they don't want to go for it and you want to, so be it, but all I can do is ask some questions. Do you want to do the other project regardless? The, the one by Senex?
Yes.
Or do you want, or you want to wait until the next meeting to decide, but I'll have one guy to start working on.
So we put in two?
Yeah.
Yeah. But, and you know, you know what I'm saying, though? Like, box color is a box color, then we have a road going over it. I'm just wondering if it's just the roadway that we're worried about fixing, because ripping out, replacing the box is a big damn, is a big damn job, but if we're just dealing with the roadway above it, it's not as big a deal.
My guess is it's probably just a roadway above it.
Okay.
From what I can see, and this is just me.
Yeah.
Looks like the box settled. You know, and now, the bridge is rough on its own, but then you get to the box and you actually bounce down onto the box and then bounce back.
Both sides? I'll confirm that then, but that's my speculation, is that it would just be pushing the concrete, going over the box.
Yeah. It's actually, the boxes are okay. It's the dirtwork between all the boxes is where that's saying we drove over that last year.
Okay.
Because we walked, we walked through them. That was the apron myself leading up to the bridge where we've got that portable film.
Yeah.
So that was all hollowed out.
Okay. Okay. I'll anticipate you doing two. Do you want to make any motions tonight? I mean, these things are, or wait, I don't care, but you probably need to make one at some point.
I'll make a motion to do the one by Senex tonight.
Okay.
And then we'll wait.
Next meeting, is that, is that enough time?
Yeah, next meeting will be fine, but you want, are you gonna do the forty-nine percent funding?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And then anticipate the, the rest being some local funds and assessments of some sort.
Monty, when you get done with reading that, can you read that motion by Dustin?
Application for Flex Fund project at Senex at forty-nine percent.
I'll second that.
Motion by Weidrich, second by Folkerts. Discussion.
Jason.
Oh.
Sorry.
No, can you say?
So then if there's, if there's some other projects, I guess, that we don't think, like, know about right now and stuff, you want to be able to go back on this or, or not?
Like, other cities, like, change your mind?
Yeah, yeah. I'm just.
I mean, as long as we decide in the next two weeks, I mean, I'll have somebody, we already, we already know the map and the cost estimate of the stuff around Senex, that's kind of the first step, is tidying up all that stuff. The rest is writing the paragraphs of why it's needed and, and whatever, so if you change your mind in the next two weeks, we're not gonna lose that much time. But I want it to be, it can't just be like a neighborhood mill and overlay project, right? It's gotta some way, some, somehow be significant to these categories, and these were two pretty, I think, pretty decent-looking projects, but we'll, time will tell, I guess.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Would that out by Crowsey's, oh, that probably not, that shut-off, that probably wouldn't fall in the water now, stuff?
Yeah.
By TSC there?
No, but, but like, if we were doing water main replacement along there and, you know, the grant was paying for half of it for water main, but there was fifty percent local share, you can apply to this program to cover the local share. You just can't go more than fifty percent of the cost. I don't know if I said that well or not, but this is for non-infrastrucure, kind of roads, not be funded somewhere else. You, you don't have a project like that that I'm aware of, but some towns are trying to get, you know, a main roadway replaced and they're using the SRF program or USD road development, and then they got no way to fund the, the rest of the street that's not eligible, and so they're going to this Flex Fund to try and get funding for that part of it. Got it? Okay. Any other discussion?
Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Folkerts.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay, then I'll come back to you with some information on the bridge next month, or next, in two weeks, and there may be Grant going through that with you, but we'll be working on this one. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We'll see you around.
Oh, I do have one more thing. So, Sam, she, about the parking along, so there's been issues by Van Haven.
Yeah, I had someone stop and ask me about parking on Eighth Avenue northeast and Seventh Street northeast. And people are, I don't know if that's a clinic or a chiropractor. Chiropractor or something there, but everybody's parking right up against the stop sign, so that's blocking traffic there. They can't see around the vehicles sometimes while out there at the intersection, so.
And then that ties into, we have two signs, you have a good, good idea about that, too, on Eighth. So, if you want to cross Seventh, so your stop sign's here, stop sign here, and the throughway, well, anytime the ambulance has to come out or go in, they have to, you know, they have stop signs they contend with.
That could be another project idea, I don't know.
Yeah, but it sounds a bit, was it Jared that you were talking to?
Well, I know this is Jared. Yeah, it was, okay.
I just can't picture.
I don't know if it was Jared that you were talking about.
Yeah, it was Jared.
Okay.
Is there anything engineering related on that one?
I just, if we were good to go, I don't know, it's up to you guys, if we want to put those signs around, I think it would be beneficial.
You're talking about, now you're talking about on the stop signs by the hospital?
Correct.
Yeah, where the hotel is and that intersection.
You see your daughter, you're right, it's the daughter's house one.
Yeah.
Do you know where he stuck you up?
Yep.
Okay.
That would actually make more sense.
But then that plays into those cars parking there in Mannehan.
Most of the time the ambulance does come off the bypass, so to me that would make a little more sense.
So I don't know, it's kind of like all like a grouped-in kind of situation in this developing area in that area.
So are we looking for engineering recommendation or?
The, the signs were an engineering thing. I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I just heard signs, engineering, so I put them together, here we are. I don't know, I know that's been an issue up there by a Mannehaven and Eighth with parking there on the street. I don't know, I just wanted to bring that up.
I don't know where. I, I know the intersection.
Yeah, this is, right here. And this is controlled by stops on here, Monty.
Jared? So we said, right now we're currently stopping the north side of traffic.
East, east-west, it's.
The comments in there was that it's really not an engineering issue, it's just a matter of.
See if I can fire that a little better.
It can be. We could, we could make it an engineering issue and do a traffic study, and I wouldn't, because there's not enough cars in traffic till morning. You know, one versus the other. I would consider it a, a local decision that, you can do either one, as long, whatever you do, I would. If you decide to flip them, like you did when we put that stop sign at the end, that, you know, at the end of Main here, put some type of flasher, cones, or sign, or something up there very bright for a while so that people see the new, stop signs are flipped, but you could do a traffic study, but I, I wouldn't recommend it, because it feels more like. Cause it feels more like you and law enforcement can decide what you would prefer. If you'd like the traffic to stop this way or this way and, or both ways.
That's all I have though?
Okay, for your service, sir. Sorry.
It's Jared.
Yep, you guys.
All right. Moving down to six A.
I didn't hear back from him.
Yeah.
Cobble fireworks display in Plinus.
Back.
When is it back from him yet?
When is?
Oh, God. September. Excuse me, if you wanna know for sure, I can.
Look quick. I'll, I'll reach back.
I wanna say it's the first part of September.
So that's coming up here, sure.
Yeah, oh yeah. But don't quote me on it.
You said seven?
No, I said first part of.
It's all.
I guess we have a busy weekend.
Well, I wanna say it's the Friday of, no, hold on.
No, that's harvest.
No, that's harvest fest.
You, uh. To have it.
I got it. Okay, it is September nineteenth, Friday, September nineteenth at school. Which is two weeks, what, two, two more meetings before.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess if you hear from him, we can just put it on and again.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. All right, moving down to six B, street closure is a chamber harvest fest. Monty.
Uh, they're doing their parade is going to start up by the school. Come down Fourth Avenue onto Main Street. And it will stop actually at First Avenue Northeast. And they'll just go back up that street then to where they started the parade. But the parade officially stops there at the corner of Main and First Avenue. And then they just wanna block off Main Street from. Central to First Avenue West is my understanding for the dance.
Like.
Like normal. Yeah. Like, like, the only change was the parade route.
So it's just that short little stretch from that?
Basically from up by Senex on Seventh down Fourth Avenue on Main to First Avenue.
So that is a short.
Wow. Yep. Well, they're gonna have to go all the way over to the football field. Well, that's where they're gonna line up.
Yeah.
So they'll come down, so it'll plant up on Eighth again, or the parking lot.
Yeah.
And then work down to Seventh and, I gotcha.
Yeah. So pretty much the same as last year.
Yeah.
Motion open.
Motion by Wedrick.
Second.
Second by Folkerts. Discussion. Here, no discussion. Roll call? Oh, no, we don't need roll call. All those in favor, signal by saying hi.
Hi.
Hi. All those same sign. Motion carried. Seven A. Golf cart ordinance proposed. Monty.
I took the ordinance that Attorney Donovan provided from Park River and updated it just a little bit. I did have a couple of questions. Deal with the rate of speed. For these types of things at fifteen miles an hour. And then there's, there's what's specific, that it could not be used on the shared use path. And then visiting with, uh, Attorney Donovan again on that trail. It didn't seem likely that we could designate that a recreation trail under DOT rules. So that's kinda.
On from the whole?
The path from over by Dollar General out to the golf course. With what he had intended to make a rec, or suggested as a recreation trail.
So I don't know. I think Casey and I, I've. I've talked with a few different people. And I don't know if you remember Casey. But it was mentioned that. When, when that was poured, that, I don't know if it was concrete before, if we widened it. Jerry supposedly, and this is all hearsay. Wanted that for the purpose of the safety of golf carts driving to the course. Correct me if I'm wrong. I know, I don't know, I don't remember that and I don't remember if that was before my time. Um. And I really don't know. Why the signs are up there, but I could, you know, get an answer. I just didn't get a chance to call that particular individual today. It was busy.
Again, that's part of the maintenance agreement with DOT when that was put in, that those signs were installed. As it's intended for non-vehicle use.
So that's probably why those went up there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Jeez.
Well, I know we discussed last meeting that we kinda wanted to do that, but now it sounds like we can't.
Is there anything saying we can't just remove the signs? Didn't sound like it under the maintenance agreement. So we still are in contract with the maintenance. Yeah, we've got the maintenance agreement as long as the path is there.
And I don't, no, just a reminder by state century code, they can't be on the highway.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
That's kinda, yeah.
So.
Maintenance.
So the maintenance agreement, that's that they maintain on the right of way or the, from the highway and stuff or what? What's this maintenance or?
On the bike path itself.
Right.
In order to put the bike path in the city, I believe the maintenance agreement is North Dakota DOT. Which includes a section dealing with what signage and those types of things are supposed to be on there.
Obviously because of their easement, so.
It's within their right of way.
Right of way, yeah. So yeah.
So I'm just gonna say that to. You know, that I voted them like no, no then on that project, you know. You know, because I guess it was made them like wider and stuff, you know, you know, and that. Even though that wasn't supposed to be used for the. Using the golf courts there and stuff, you know, I think that their plan though, I guess. Plan, I guess, was. Was they just let it slide, you know, so.
Cause I mean.
Just not enforce it.
Yeah.
Yeah, technically, Monty, cause there's not signs on any other part of the bike path, correct?
Uh, I believe there's some over.
There.
There's there? Yeah, there's no.
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 Yeah. Probably every intersection.
Okay.
By Senex.
So then what do we do in the. In the case like Sam and I were discussing this morning about it, like even if we were to designate some kind of something. And as far as, you know, all parks have to do to the right of way of pedestrians, we can't even do that.
He's like. Perhaps put a sign up that says pedestrians have the right of way.
You could put up a sign.
Um, or you could put a maximum speed limit perhaps on the bike path that applies to anybody. But that doesn't really get to the problem.
I ride my bike super fast, Mark.
It's kinda hard to do that. How many bikes or golf carts have speedometers on them? That, you know, with Monty's got that one in there about the speed. I, I guess I don't understand it cause how many golf carts have speedometers? So how fast do you? You know, unless you got one of those fancy signs like we got out on the bypass to test how fast your car is going.
Look at your own.
Jim.
Yeah, that's part of that. That's right. That, I thought I remember seeing that somewhere too. But that's.
Yeah.
Jim or Tony or Samantha, I mean, do you have any comments that you're on the force with that? Or just trying to get all the discussion in here.
I mean, like I said, we were just trying to see if we could potentially follow through with it, you know, with the org, with the ordinance. Specific to Hazen, but it sounds like now that Monty looked into it with DOT. You know, just the way that our city is set up to go out to the golf course, it doesn't sound like we could even. Put something in place for that specific scenario.
And that's just the bike path.
Yeah.
Most of what we're dealing with right now is.
It's on the streets.
And it's understandable. It's the streets.
That we can help.
Right, correct.
Yeah, this one's definitely a tough one.
And we understand how important it is and kind of what, what kind of the luxury it is to people and parents that have, you know, golf carts. Um, trying to find that little ground is starting to get real tough.
Yeah.
Monty, does DOT cover the county too?
As far as.
That bike path?
Well, it's all in the city. We annexed that in, so it's all in the city, so.
Maybe we. We all live through the county.
I wonder if there's a way we can reach out to the state DOT and see if that small portion. We could somehow give them to deem a dual use and state that. You know, we have people trying to get out there with their golf carts and according to state century code, they cannot be on the highway. You know, so they literally have no way of getting from our city limits or from the town. Out to the golf course except for on a trailer. And they drive beside the path. Well, yeah. Except for motorcycles and these things too.
But then you're looking at golf carts on the street and you get there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that, I don't know how that would change just so fast with. Would or something get to it?
I'm guessing I know the answer. It's gonna be from DOT, but.
I know.
We could reach out to them and.
Yeah.
See if there's any way to deem that small section dual use. Understand not the rest of it, but.
Samantha, did you?
I was just gonna mention that then that kinda. Uh, brings up another thing, cause I did get asked about riding the belt carts in the ditches. And they're not classified as OHP vehicles or off-highway vehicles, so. Again, it's gonna be probably officer discretion and I don't, if a highway patrol officer sees it, I really don't know how they're gonna address it, so.
You know exactly.
Yeah, just so the public knows.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying to you where.
Yeah.
Well, I know I've, I've visited with a few different people that have called me and I told them that we're, you know. In a nutshell, we want safety, you know, and it's. We don't, I, I use the scenario I used last week. Who would you go to right now if your kiddo was, you know, hurt badly or whatever? All of them said, the city, and I'm like, well, that's part of, you know, we don't, we don't wanna be totally. Jerks about it. We're trying to be safe about it. Right? Um, and I know our, our force is working because one of them, you know, and we're giving warnings, my understanding. And I just told him legally, they could be ticketing right now. They could, cause they're not sixteen and they don't have a license.
No, it's not worries. They don't have a license.
Well, yeah, don't have, period.
Yeah, I think that's where a lot of the confusion comes from is, I mean, that seems like we have to boil it down sometimes. Cause if your kid can't operate a motor vehicle, if your kid can't take his car and drive to the school. Or if your kid can't drive on any roadway, then it can't be driven.
Cause then the next question I had was that over the road that permitted these.
Off-highway.
And I just said, it's, that's not for public roadways. Period.
Monty, we talk to DOT.
Okay.
Now, back to your ordinance, I really like it except for that speed limit.
Yeah, speed limit's kinda funky.
Yeah. I, maybe there's golf carts out there that have the speed lo, or speedometer on them. I personally haven't seen one. But I don't think it really matters as long as they're not breaking the speed limit. You know, if your golf cart can do twenty-five or four thirty-five off by the, uh, Crowsey's. I personally don't care. And strengthen that out.
My only caution on that is with the golf carts, they take up the majority of that bike path. And if they're going over fifteen, they could catch up on a pedestrian awfully quickly and.
According to that ordinance, they can't ride on the bike path.
Well, but if you're gonna, if you're saying, hey, we're looking at passing that.
We can't pass that.
Well, then I was just misunderstanding you.
So if we, if we adopt this and for some reason DOT does give us permission to dual use that path. We have changed this again, you know, to. Yeah. Put another clause saving that that portion they are allowed to. And then yes, maybe somehow limit the speed, but once again, they don't know how fast they're going. I guess there's GPS apps that you could use, but. I've used that in old vehicles that don't have speedometers.
Or just make sure you stay under fifteen.
Yeah.
I mean, it gives, I don't anticipate the law enforcement would be super aggressive with issuing tickets. Except for if it was really obvious that they're exceeding the speed limit. I mean, I think we've got pretty reasonable officers within the county. And I don't think they're gonna push it, but at the same time, I think you gotta have something there. Just because of the amount of the, the space on the bike path that a golf cart takes up. Relative to say a bicycle or a pedestrian walking or something like that.
What do you guys think of, have you seen, seen this at all?
I, I've reviewed the, uh, Monty gave copies of it and I've reviewed it. Uh, I mean, for the most part, no, I don't think anybody's really, I, speed's not really been an issue with any of the golf carts that I've come across. Like I said, we were just trying to avoid that gray area, having the ordinance, that's I think my, my prior, or our priority here.
Well, and I think. I, I've told, and then we're not the only ones that have this problem. Just the other night I talked to a detective. And it wasn't warned, so we're talking a whole new. For some reason, there's been a golf cart magnet. It hasn't, it wasn't warned. Um, and they're having issues up at the, up the lake. Oh, yeah. Um, he asked what we were doing and I told him the same thing. I said, we're trying to figure it out. We talked a little bit of it. My personal opinion, and I'm not putting any blame. Um, it seems kind of like, you know, sort of the unspoken town motto, we've been doing this for years. Well, we've been doing this for years for what I see, for, we've been doing it wrong. Um, it's been a luxury to have your kids, you know, hey, run to the store for me, go out and golf, things like that. It's been a perk. And I think some of it is the fact that you've got your new drivers of golf carts right now. When, let's just hypothetically say you've got a family that has multiple kids. You know, mom and dad taught, you know, the first kid how to drive, stop signs, yielding, all that kinda jazz. You know, and then you just expected those kids to teach the younger kids. And by the time you get to little junior, you know, we're, we're kind of hands off. Because, you know, we, we think that they know because maybe big brother taught them and they didn't. So we're running stop signs and we're not yielding and we're like kids do, we're, didn't get around. Um, I, I think it's just a matter of maybe possibly education, you know, educating these kids. Maybe parents, but maybe we can put it something in the paper, you know? Uh, I think some of it is, is kind of that. You know, do I wanna hammer on golf carts? No, because I see the benefit. I see what parents are saying. And, you know, instead of being an ass about it, I wanna help these guys out.
I love, I love to say mine. I feel like we advertise the crap off of this being an issue. First and foremost. First and foremost, and along with whatever literature we end up coming up with, obviously.
So I got a question. There are two and stuff on that first page, Monty, talks about that. About that registration and all that stuff is, is it exempt?
Yeah.
If you want to be.
Anyway, I was reading, reading that, reading that there, so if I can't find, I guess where that's, I guess like referenced that.
That was that new state's.
Title thirty-nine.
That was that new one that came out, we, uh, act gave it to us.
I know, I read through the stuff, I.
It did say. Yeah. Was that towards the bottom of that attachment, Monty, that, uh, one from the legislature? The new one, I thought so. It was in one of the paragraphs here. Yeah, exempt for title registration and equipment provision was title thirty-nine.
Bottom paragraph.
Like the very last sentence in that bottom paragraph.
I don't think that we would want to, want to, no, I guess like do that, right?
Yeah, I just don't think they cover that.
They make it sort of not exempt from some of their legislation? So they'd have to have all the equipment and, well, then they would be required to have the speedometer.
No, speedometer's not required.
If they were to fall in provisions of title thirty-nine, they would be required to.
You don't have to have, or not, you don't have to have one on a motorcycle. Mirrors, lakers, brake lights, and a horn, I think is all.
Where are you?
Off the top of my head, I can't recall specifically. But I'd have, I'd have to look into that. I don't recall specifically.
He's talking dirt bikes, you don't need.
Yeah, off-road use might be a little bit different, but I'd be a little bit concerned that you may have to have a speedometer.
Yeah, we should use four hundred three, that also. So, yeah. I think.
So then if we don't, I just require that stuff, then. Then to. I guess what's, what's gonna be the age, I guess, like minimum?
Well, you have to. According to this ordinance, they still have to have a driver's license or a permit with.
It's all the same, you can be, you can be more restrictive than the state law, which is, obviously you have to have a driver's license to operate on the real good public drivers. So, yeah, it can be.
And they still do have to have a least liability insurance.
So, permit and or license?
Basically, all the same, but not the equipment. Not the equipment.
And the registration, avoid for the registration. Which is helpful, because there is a lot of golf carts out there that you can't register. They don't have a, the number to register.
Yeah, or one that's not recognized.
Yes. And I'm guessing that's why the state gave that, exempt a lot of them. I'm, I'm not sure what I'm thinking. But, yeah, so you still have to have a, have a license or a permit with a licensed driver, which is like normal. And then have to have at least employability insurance. And that was all in that ordinance, Monty.
Yeah, because with the, with the permit, you have to have a licensed, physical licensed driver.
Right next to you.
Yep, yep.
I think it's three years experience, right?
Same as a vehicle.
Yes, same, same thing, it's just as if you're driving like your, your dad's pickup.
You're right.
Is this the same one that also says only can drive in daylight and only to and from the residence and the golf course? Is that in?
Yes, yes, it is. I think it did say something that you can drive.
Director.
Um, af- after sunset, but you have to have license or lights, taillights, and blinders. I believe I read that in there today.
I must have missed that, or what was that, uh?
Right there, C.
There was another one referencing the equipment of a, a little bit for it.
Cannot without headlights, taillights, turn signals after.
Okay, gotcha.
Sorry, it was in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, every, I like everything in there, other than the speed limit thing. I just don't see that needed in there. Especially because they can't technically ride on the bu, bike path or sidewalks anyway, so.
So, Monty, this particular community, do, do you know what the fine is? If you're outside of that ordinance?
There's a twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars.
There's a hundred. There is a penalty section, twenty-five, fifty, and a hundred. Twenty, fifty, one hundred and fifty.
Any person violates, that can sue you. So that just covers the whole, this whole title, or chapter sixteen in this, in this, uh, okay. So any violation, you can just slap this, like for instance, the sixteen point two nine oh three on it with, for a second or third violation of whatever it is, right? So we shouldn't necessarily create a whole slew, I suppose we probably should, right?
You could.
A slew of the violations, and then you'll have to get that to, is that some Jeff or whatever, at tracks?
So, I suppose you could come on to do that, slap this, and also say they didn't have registered or insurance, you can give them that ticket and this one, or would it just be this one?
Yeah, yeah, there would be discussion there, again.
So then how do you record if I'm on my third violation or not?
Welcome to the mystery of law enforcement story, you just have to hope that dispatch puts it in, right? Or.
Yeah, I mean, dispatch has records of it, so we can go back and search it by either name or.
The tickets are indexed too, so it's easy.
They are.
Okay, okay.
Well, he says easy loosely, but yes.
Search for it.
It can be, as long as everyone is using the same terminology when it comes to like verified offenses and stuff, it's, it's doable. And you're already in a violation.
So, we have two readings of this for it to go in place, right?
Yeah. And if we don't do a reading tonight, do I make the changes and get all the DOT, the first reading would be next, or next meeting, excuse me.
But we could do it tonight.
You could do the first reading tonight.
And then come next meeting, if we get clarification, we still could come, change it and claim that as our second one forever. Okay, so I will make a motion to pass this as written.
Second.
Motion by Weidrich, second by Fulkert. Any other discussion?
That way we get the ball rolling.
And that was.
Push it out longer.
That's what the speedometer structure is.
No, no.
I said it as written.
Okay.
As written, yeah. Because we can still change it for second, as long as we get back from.
DOT.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing a roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Fulkert.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye. Motion carried.
Good job on that, Monty, all I did was copy. I like that one, that one. Covers just by.
Number one. Eight, a commercial building permit, SMC renovation.
Uh, basically, ago, ago, constructions submit an application for building permit for some renovations to include SMC chemistry analyzer and chemo hood. Uh, it's all interior remodeling and making of different areas. But since it is a commercial structure, it requires board approval. Building inspector Wees did a review of the plans, they are engineered plans and had no issues with them.
So, motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion.
Casey.
Where's this work? Is it in those, in those, I guess, red areas, black pink area, or?
There's one in some pages of plans here. My understanding is yes, it'd be mostly those red areas, within those red areas.
Well, you wouldn't very well put a chemo hood over your case, come on now.
Any other?
It's labeled on there, smoke zone.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Fulkert.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye, motion carried. All right, reports, nine, A, water sewer garbage. Thank you. Nine B, street cemetery. The majority of what I have is down on eleven A, but Dave.
Finished up painting, so we're gonna get back with, uh, Dr. John Freeze and stop writing it.
Nine C.
So, we had a transit meeting this morning, um, Transit Board in regard to the fairs, the school non-van response. Monty, if you wanna help me, if you wanna help me tainteen this conversation here. So basically.
Yeah, basically the Transit Board would like to set the public hearing to increase the fees for all local rides to a dollar fifty. And they would also like to include in that public hearing to raise the fee for the trip to Bismarck from twelve dollars to fifteen dollars. And the public hearing is part of the requirements for federal grants, so. They just wanted your approval to set that hearing and then we would likely try to get it within this next two weeks so that we can have the board act on those at the next meeting.
So then the social media post that says a dollar, that may change.
What did you say, maybe?
It's a big.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, without, without the public meeting, we really can't raise that fee yet, so.
Correct.
Can't we put anything out as a dollar for now?
Yep.
Then, then if you do, and you know, pending the public hearing, if you do change it, you can make it as a specific date, you know, as of this date, the fee will now be a dollar fifty, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Do you need a roll call on that one, Monty?
No.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all pose same sign. Motion carried. Anything else, Jesse?
I think that was, yeah, Monty, you got anything to comment on, so that's all I got.
Please fire fourth street.
You got any? Tony, Sam, anything to add?
Just that when we, maybe next year when we're, um, closing down this main street for Chalk Fest, there's a lot of traffic on third and, what is the second right here? And, uh, maybe if we could do something about that intersection there, if there was a really close call.
This one right here?
Correct, yeah, third and second. Um, since the traffic is kind of rerouted that way, since Main Street's closed for a week, so I don't know if there's something that we can do next year, erect some temporary stop signs for that intersection, I don't know. But maybe if we could start thinking about that right now and come up with something by that time.
Other than that, how do you think the traffic went for Chalk Fest?
From what I could tell during Chalk Fest, it was a really good turnout. Um, the only complaint that I received while I was on duty during day shift was some bicycles over at the library, but we're having a big event, so that's, you know, kind of.
Yeah, for the most part, everybody was.
Yeah.
Washing out for everybody. Yeah, I mean, it went, it went really well, so.
You can say, now it's over, you're not gonna put it if you. Did you ever find these tour signs? I didn't make it up here during any of it.
I didn't too.
Do we have any, Dave?
Can you get us a quote on a couple?
Yeah.
I was just gonna say.
Two portable ones, because we could use them for other things too.
Because maybe next year, maybe we close off this intersection, I don't know, just throwing ideas up.
I like the idea of checking the stop signs.
I did come through here during Chalk Fest one evening to pick up my stuff. It was pretty chaotic over here.
Yeah, that intersection specifically.
Cars parked on both sides and then they're parked on the street by the parking lot too. It was, it was pretty chaotic.
Yeah, I do know, you know, honestly, there was a lot of questions about having that Sunday to Sunday thing. Saturday night, I actually talked to, it was like two of us that came through. And like forty tourists from like Asia and their tour guide, they parked over by Senex. And they're like, hey, we are just touring around here, touring the US. Uh, we heard you guys have this like chalk thing, and so I took them down there. And, yeah, at like ten o'clock at night, you got all these, you know, all these Asians just walking around, they loved it. They thought it was cool, they're on the ground like everyone else was. I mean, I know that there were questions about the Sunday to Sunday thing and there were still people out there during the Sunday, but it was nice to know, you know, hey, where is that? I think it's just right down there, parked in the library parking lot and, you know, so. You know, um, I think it was a really good turnout, other than our normal hours.
I'm sure they had them down there.
Hey, they were, they were just gonna walk from Senex all the way down there, like, there's no sidewalk in it. Once you just followed me, they just parked right by the, they parked the bus right by the, by the tracks. And, yeah, they thought it was cool and then I, I helped them get out of town, so.
By saying leave, get out of town.
Well, I just say that.
Space until a certain point.
I know, I, I agree with that too, but there was a, like, a stream of ten, fifteen-ish, and we were there Saturday evening.
Yeah.
Of people coming and going, you know?
Yeah.
And chatting and.
Yeah, we came after two, that kind of.
Now.
It made sense.
Anything else?
Not that I got.
Myra HCD, I was gonna add, I was gonna talk about Chalk Fest also. I think it was wonderful, it was cool, because I also, the times I was here, I saw people enjoying the afternoon. So, thank you for closing the street for that time, but I think a detour, some way of controlling the traffic a little better might be helpful. And that would make it easier for you guys, I suppose. Um, you know, as, as it always goes, economic development moves so slowly. But I did finally get my lowest approval, it's a web statewide national advertising for businesses for sale that we can use now free of charge. I just got my login information today. And then we talked about putting businesses on our Hazen website too, to get a little bit more activity. I think we have to market our community a little better than we do. And I've gotten to talk to one business I'm working on, I'm not real fast at preparing forms, plus it's budget time, but it's, it's a priority, we gotta get that done. We do have a gentleman named Dan Baker, who's based at the front of Promised Land. He is a, he's a rodeo production guy, plus he makes saddles. And he has visited with Mike and Jessica, apparently they do things a little different, they do, their markets are different. He's come, makes them for the rodeo people, they make saddles for regular folks. So, um, I've not met him yet, Antonette met him, because she had keys to the building, and I didn't want to bother them, they are in there working. So, um, I've not met him yet, Antonette met him, because she had keys to the building, and I didn't want to bother them, they are in there working. Clean some of that up too, which is great. There's been some activity on Parvi, there's been activity on the Waterworks Building. We talked to Chris, and he said there's been a little bit of activity on the restaurant, but people are afraid, you know, the people who are interested in other jobs, and they don't wanna give up their jobs to make that dream come true for themselves, so I think that's gonna take a little bit of time. One of the businesses that I've been talking to, though, for all of these other locations, has talked about some food. A family-style type thing, so that's good. And I think, I don't know if all of you have seen that, both the Hazen and the golf course have food, and families are welcome. I also visited with somebody about a bed and breakfast, but the property they were looking at is not suitable. I just, we've wrapped our brains about that, too, a bed and breakfast in this town, and we still have those big and beautiful houses that would work. Uh, then the only other thing is, I'm gonna get the first reading of the budget to our board Tuesday, next Tuesday. So if there's things that you think we should duck it, opt in. That's it.
No hotel yet?
No. As Buster said after I'd been there for three months, Myra, you gotta get a hotel. I said, Buster, you've done this for twelve years, you gotta get a hotel. I do talk to people a lot of the time.
Myra, Larry mentioned Portman, is that Moka Mama's not happening anymore?
No, no. She ghosted Jessica.
Okay.
Supposedly there's some things happening in their lives that didn't allow that to happen.
Got you.
Yeah, she, yeah, but we, my wife had her, her posting, that just, yeah, too chaotic, and it just wasn't enough.
What's that? We lost three, well, we lost two, because Urban Coffee is out at Crowsey's, I don't know if you've been there, you drink those kinds of coffees, but it looks like it's been busy.
We went, we went there Sunday after church, and I didn't realize both sides were trapped up, you guys.
Yeah, it looks.
And there was lines, there was, I don't know, eight to ten.
For the first time.
Eight to ten on both sides, I'm like, wow.
And she does have breakfast items.
Yep.
Limited comedy is.
This goes also fast, so.
Yeah, I have my wrist wide, and she will hold it too.
Anyway, okay, anything else, Myra?
No.
Thank you for the info. We'll speak a little bit more in detail down on twelve A. But Monty, do you have anything with the president at all, or not?
No.
All right, we're down to eleven A. Bid opening for wheel loader.
I will pull these if you need, Mark.
As Monty's opening, uh, Dave requested, and I think it's a fair request, we've gotten a little tired, to not make, we've, I know, make a final decision tonight, you guys? Because Dave wants to go through, Dave explained what you kind of...
Just go through some of the specs and just look everything over here before you make a decision.
If that makes sense. Is that turned up? Okay. Go ahead, Myra. Thank you. We do have Butler A RDO here as well.
Thank you.
During, assuming the questions, answers, so, thank you guys for coming.
It's very just reading it, just to make sure everything looks good. Yeah, it looks like appropriate bonds on here, um, and then... Do you have the actual bids?
Okay.
So the first bid that we received was from, uh, General Equipment and Supplies, and they had a qualifying bid with the appropriate bond, um, and it looks like they checked all the appropriate boxes. Um, and their bid price without the trade-in allowance was two hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred, with a twenty-eight thousand dollar trade allowance, taking that total to two hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred. And that quote, um... And then the next one that we have got...
Turn that expiration date on there at all.
I am not seeing, it's good for thirty days from the above date, so it's good until eight twenty-one. So, in theory, we got a few days to accept this one.
Our notice says we have the right to hold them for thirty days for the date of openings.
Yeah, so.
So thirty days.
And then the next one that we got is from Butler Machinery. Butler Machinery also has a qualifying bid bond. They have a qualifying bid, their bid appears to meet all the specifications as required, was for a twenty-twenty-six CAT nine thirty-eight wheel loader. Um, their bid price without trade-in allowance was two hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred. Their trade-in allowance was thirty-three thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. So that would bring the total price to two hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Um, and again, the bid is valid for thirty days according to their bid specs. Next up, we have rodeo. They also have a qualifying bid bond. Their spec sheet also appears to meet all the qualifications. Their bid is for a twenty-twenty-six John Deere three twenty-four P. Their price without trade-in allowance is two hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, with a trade-in allowance of forty-six thousand. A bid price with trade-in allowance of two hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Hello from General, was that a Komatsu or Case?
That is a good question, I realized I didn't read that off. I apologize. That is a Komatsu WA three twenty-eight.
Guessing cat for cat.
I think that that's a fair guess.
Cat for the self-fence too, but I don't think they make a little field loader.
Next one that we have got is from Titan Machinery. They also have an appropriate bid bond. And they also have a qualifying bid proposal for a twenty-twenty-six Case seven twenty-one GTS. The bid price without trade-in allowance is two hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, a trade-in allowance of thirty-one thousand, and a bid price with trade-in allowance of two hundred and four thousand seven twenty-one. And it looks like all of these proposals have spec sheets that look at them.
Dave?
I believe that that's all the bids, correct?
All right. Dave, would it be fair to say we can make a decision at the next meeting, or? So, Monty, we can put that on the next agenda? Like I said, Dave wants to take a peek at it, look at specs, and what have you, I think that's fair, so. Any other comments, questions? So, no one answered next meeting, gentlemen?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Again, thank you for coming up, appreciate it.
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions?
If you guys have any questions, please let us know.
Yep, we'll do.
I guess my only comment, Dave, would be, snow tires are an option?
Yep.
That's what I want to look at, see repair options and that kind of stuff, that's what I'm going through.
A lot of my differences in some of those that they did.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. Thanks, guys. Okay. Moving down to eleven B, personal policy revision revisions.
Started the same, there were no comments or recommendations from any of the staff after they were sent out with the last year old. So these are in the same form as you previously saw then, so. Is this first or second? Doesn't matter, there only is one.
Oh. Yeah, this is just...
This is not an order.
Yeah, this is just for the training policy.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Do you want a roll call on this, Monty, since probably on this one? Roll call?
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Volker?
Aye.
Hack?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, down to twelve A. Monty, if you wanna get the...
Well, in visiting with, no, I just, in visiting with Attorney Donovan, he said it would be, probably be best to acknowledge the vacancy on the board now. That would set the timelines for action by the board to appoint, or if the residents wish to petition to have a special election, or if you guys decide you want a special election, so.
So do you have a, uh, yeah, you do have a write-up, of what, what it would entail in case somebody does watch our meeting. Thanks for coming, guys.
Petition, qualified petition of the electors of the city of Hazen would require fifty-five signatures requesting a special election. Candidates would then be able to file a petition for the position and...
And then if we don't get any candidates inside of those fifteen days?
No, this is, they have fifteen days to request it, then you as a board would set the date for the election.
Okay. Okay.
Giving candidates time to, to file their petitions. Because we still gotta get signatures then, correct? Yes, correct.
Okay, so the fifteen days, okay.
So it's basically the same, is it the same requirements basically then, as we all had to go through? Petition is up to fifty-five, so, okay.
Yeah.
Just making sure I wasn't confusing myself there.
Now, if we do not get anybody, then it goes to...
If there is no request for a special election within the fifteen days, you guys then have authority to appoint or conduct your own special election.
Correct.
So either way, we could have a special election work, or?
You could have a special election, or you guys, if nobody applies, or submits a petition with the required signatures, you guys can appoint within. So, I don't know, you have to take any action today, um, or, I, the only thing that you have to do today, I think, is acknowledge the vacancy, so that that starts the fifteen days.
Today.
Today. And then after that, I think you can see if anybody submits a petition, but then you guys will have a decision at fifteen days. Do you want to hold a special election, or do you want to appoint within?
And then if it's appointed within, it would be on the next general election in June?
Correct.
Correct. Either way, it's gonna be on the next general election, because that position was up next year.
Right.
I don't know what you guys are thinking, obviously, we made it public, and there is a vacancy, but me personally, I don't want to appoint. Jerry didn't give up on us.
Right.
I'd, I'd like to let him finish on his term.
I'd like to let him finish on his term, unless the public puts their petition together, then we have no choice but doing a special election. That's just how I feel, with respect for Jerry. He didn't give up on us when he got real sick. I don't want to give up on him. You know, that's nine, and once his position's up anyways.
Is it nine, is it nine, it is this year, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, that's a good point, Dustin, I thought that, because he, Jerry legitimately did not give up. I mean, I remember the last in-person meeting was here. Him and I talked, and, you know, I don't know if you guys heard it, but it was that hour or whatever. It was, it was a struggle for him, because it worsened. He still, given what he, I mean, he, he was here for us, and for his community, so.
But. But if the community puts a petition together, we have no option but to have this.
That's what I was gonna say, if someone comes forward, then we.
Our hands are tied up.
Correct.
Correct.
So we obviously need a motion and a second, or not really, or?
Think you really need more than that, Mark?
I, I think it would be a different story if it was somebody resigning, but I don't think you need to motion to accept a vacancy.
Yeah.
I think you just need to acknowledge it in a minute, minutes that there's a vacancy.
Now, is it, one more question. Is it for a seat or for the actual?
Yeah, specific to the mayor position. And so what can happen is, you can have the seat for the mayor position, and if that gets filled within the existing board, then we have, will potentially have to go through the process for filling the remaining board seat next.
But it doesn't have to be filled from the board?
Correct.
But ultimately, it's for the mayor.
President, yeah.
Okay, that's the other thing, the president of the commission, right? Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Not that it makes too big of a difference or a big deal, but there's some confusion between.
The duties are the same, but.
Yeah, between the structures of a commission and a council. I got people coming to me constantly with questions, this and that. Okay.
I mean, the biggest, you mentioned a good point, council and commission. I just bring up councils have warrants. Commissions have.
And the mayor.
And the mayor, and commissions have portfolios and mayor.
And the president.
And the president, yes. Well, I think we start it tonight. Is that fair?
15 days, you help do.
Okay. So does the 15 days include Monday, the, whatever today's date is? Is today day one, or is tomorrow day one?
You start calling tomorrow, Mark.
Okay. Put that in the paper in a half.
Any other discussion? Moving on, if there's no other discussion, to 12B, September 1st, 2025 regular meeting. Do we want to move that to Tuesday since it's holiday?
I would not, I'd wait until maybe Tuesday.
You won't?
For the next two weeks after that. We started outage that Tuesday.
Okay.
So I'll be on close unless we have the meeting at 7:30 at night.
I won't be either way.
Say that again, just.
I'll get either way.
And I am, too. Do we want to just do, do it Tuesday? Or, I, I don't care, what, what do you guys?
Do it back a week?
No, that next week, I'll still be on outage.
Because looking at the calendar here.
That's Monday and Tuesday? Or is it Tuesday?
Well, the first, we will not be on outage, but the second.
So if we held it, if we held it the regular day on September 1st, you'd be a little.
Correct.
Now, and then if not, you're on 12 weeks, you said?
Oh, we're on 12 for.
Or 12.
Two weeks.
So.
If you guys did have it on the second, that would be 15 days.
Yeah, so we'd have, yeah.
So you'd know whether or not somebody.
As long as you three can make it, you got corner.
And then you guys would have a little bit clearer path going forward as far as whether you're gonna have to have a special election.
And then I could close that 15 days, if they have to close it at that meeting.
True.
Thanks for coming, Albert.
Unless anybody else wants it later on the second also, so you can make it, you guys.
That's up to you. 7:15, I could be here that Tuesday. But that's up to you guys, and Monty, that's up to you.
Is that for you?
Somebody will be here, or this one of us will be here, yeah.
You're on the hot seat, what do you want?
Yeah, it's up to you.
That'd be awesome, if you guys are willing to go that late.
Do that if you wanna.
Or keep it Monday.
Well, then you're not gonna have your 15 days.
Yeah, true.
If you wanna start it. You know, then at like 8 o'clock or something?
About 7:15 is fine.
Okay.
You know, I'm generally about 10 to 15 minutes late all summer long, so I should be able to make it here by 7:15, or even if you guys wanted it started at 7, it may be a little bit late.
You'll drive us fast car to work that day.
But then just on the 15th, you would still be for the second meeting in September.
No, we're off.
You are. So just be that one meeting.
Correct.
On the time of that, move it to the second?
Yeah, actually, on the 15th, we'll be back on eight-hour shifts again, and so the 10th.
So I'm hearing that we want to move it to the second at 7:15?
15 or 17?
15? Okay.
Motion?
I don't know, we don't need motions about, do we?
That's okay.
All right, sounds good.
It's a September 5th, September 7th at 7:15.
Yep.
Perfect.
I'll be here at 5:30.
Again, you know, they got these neat little apps that remind you.
We're gonna have the email on Friday, reminder, we starting.
Reminder, damn.
Specifically.
You better put reminder mark, too, if you're talking to reminding people.
The 13, public comments. Hearing none. Moving on to 14, approval of the bills. It looks like, Monty, we got some add-ons here.
Couple of add-ons, yep. About $1,800 for.
Motion approved, bill is presented.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Fokker.
Aye.
Hack.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned.